It's Tuesday, September 21st, and it is actually 6:08 PM. And this is a public hearing for a variance application. To start out with review, we do have a quorum here. We are short two council members, but we do have a quorum. Agenda item number one, review of variance application of Mr. Robert Stoneman. Has, have you all had a chance to go over this?
Yes.
Okay. And the property owners, we did do the legal notice posting. The property owners within 200 feet were notified, and the applicant was notified. In fact, the applicants are here, right? The other Stonemans, I'm assuming. You should never assume, but I am assuming. Would you like to come and explain what, what you're asking for? This is, you're Mr. Robert Stoneman, right?
Yeah, mine's Robert Stoneman.
Okay.
I understand that, that the garage that we intend to build, the structure itself, I've been notified that, that violates a setback on the current situation. I'd like to start off by just giving you a little bit of my background. I was a contractor out of Milwaukee for quite a while, a couple of decades. Did NIDC, DCD, HUD, HOMA, a lot of other projects. When I sold that company off, I became one of the managers for Clay's Builders, which again, did government project work, built ambulatory care facilities in the inner city of Milwaukee. So I'm very knowledgeable for use of variances and how they apply. When I started this project originally, I noticed on the property that there was an issue with water. That the water, because of the street out in the front, was slanted toward the property for about 30, 35 yards. And it flowed directly into what is now going to be the position of the driveway. What that did is it divided that water flow in half. Half went alongside the house and was washing out the foundation under the slab of the house. The other half flowed directly through my front yard in a swale that obviously may have been there naturally or was put there intentionally. But it came within a foot or a foot and a half of the house. When I first moved into the place, in the first part of June, we had at the time a 14-inch over the standard rainfall. Within the first two weeks that I was there, I had four inches of water. Spam. Within, I would say a foot, maybe a foot and a half of the house itself. I saw that this was an issue. Since it didn't really affect the house, that would be something I'd have to take care of in the future. However, the part of the water that flowed directly on the end of the house, which would be the, let's say, the north end of the house, that was something that needed to be taken care of. Originally, my plan was to build the garage back considerably farther from the house. However, in doing that, after running some shots of the grade, I noticed that it would redirect the water closer to the house, that it would actually back up. Some of the water did flow into the property to the north of me, but not very much. But in doing that, it would have all flowed directly toward the house, which to me had to be rectified. So I went about applying for permits for the garage slab itself. I don't know if you have a copy of that in front of you?
Yes.
All right, the garage slab itself, and I wanted to have it within the normal setbacks. I went to the office. Every time I applied for a permit, whether it was for the tree removal on the lot next door, whether it was the garage slab, the driveway, whatever it was doing, I made absolutely certain to ask, what is the setback? I was told on three different occasions that it was 25 feet from the road. So I deliberately made that setback 26 feet back from the road, just to make sure that if there was no problems. I also made sure that I was using the far edge of the road, not the tire tracks, but far enough off that it would have been far enough away. In doing this, it allowed the water to not flow by the house, but all of it to flow by the front of the house, which negated that problem. After some fill put in, that problem was rectified, which I was glad of. I didn't want the slab on the house cracking. That house in particular was made for wheelchair access. So the doors, all access points on the house are at grade level. If I were building the house, I would have put it 48 or 24 inches higher. I would have filled it to make sure that that wasn't an issue. However, it's too late to do anything about that now. So when I placed the application in for the concrete permit, again, each time I asked, what is the setback? I always assumed setbacks at 30 feet. The reason it's always 30 feet on normal projects is the city allows five feet for utilities, and then it would be a 25-foot setback from there. However, I was never told anything other than 25 feet from the road, which seemed reasonable to me because of the situation that, the watershed and things like that. After I got the notice that, after applying for the garage and getting the notice it was out of compliance, I asked the secretary to show me what the compliance was. He came out to my house, he measured at the end, showed me, measured from the center of the road 25 feet back, and said that that's where the setback started, which would be another 25 feet. So that means that the setback, according to him, would be 50 feet from the center of the road. Now, that would, at that point, put half of my house out of compliance, as well as the entire garage slab. I can't move the garage slab. Now, no inspection was ever done of the premise before with a permit access and application. Nothing was done on forms. Anytime concrete is poured, always should be a forms inspection, just for safety. Not saying that contractors are sometimes dishonest, but sometimes they aren't. So the rebar and everything should be inspected. That never was done. I assumed everything was fine at that point. The slab was poured, everything was good. I waited what I felt was a standard amount of time for the concrete to harden properly so that when the structure was built, there wouldn't be an issue. Then I was informed again that, that it couldn't be built. So I guess the special, the special effect of what I'm doing is to try to negate the problem with water coming off the road. I don't know what's going to happen with the road. I've been told many times by many people, don't mess with the road. Fine with that. All I'm trying to do is make certain that if we do get a heavy rain, and I mean a heavy rain, that I don't end up with water coming in the front door of the house, because I don't have insurance for flood insurance, as you know, it's quite expensive. I'm retired. I really don't do this anymore. After I, after I retired, or after I left the construction industry, I became an IT professional, and I managed IT for Spectrum, which was a difficult transition for me. But after 20 years of being there, I retired. And so I'm, as far as being precise in what I do through both careers of mine, it's an absolute. I did, as I say, NIDC, DCD, HUD, and HOMA projects. Whenever I had any issue or any problems, I always asked, what are the variances, what are the setbacks, what has to be done? If the person at the desk didn't know or wasn't positive, I was always and usually informed by the person at the desk. I don't know, I'll check with the inspector. Or I don't know, I'll get somebody who knows, and then I get the proper information. And I honestly, many times, the information that I was given at the desk was not correct. But then again, it was corrected at that same time. I would have been more than happy to do what I can to move the garage slab back to where it would be proper, but I'd have to renegotiate with the concrete guy and put in a support wall, maybe two feet high, along the garage slab as I moved it farther back, which would require more landfill and probably another $3,000 to $4,000 in the construction cost. So that's why I put the garage exactly where it was. There was never any intention of violating any codes or any specific regulations regarding displacement. I feel that the distance from the road is, in the letter that I got, or in the variance thing, it says 15 feet. So I guess now that's three different setbacks I've been given. 50 feet back, 25 feet from the road, and now on the variance, 15 feet is where the slab is. Okay. I had the land surveyed. There are two survey stakes. There's the new one, and there's the old one. I don't know which one is the original. I'm assuming the one closest to the road is the original. It's about four feet to five feet off of the road. Then the survey that I just had done is about another four feet back or three feet back from that, and they both have pins. One's a steel pipe in the ground, the other one is a steel spike from the newest survey. So I don't even know if that setback at, stating 15 feet is where the garage slab is, is insufficient, because I don't know if that's taken off the new one or the old one. But nobody pounds a pipe in the ground, puts a white stake in it with a red tape around it for fun. So I'm assuming that that was done for some reason. So all I'm asking is that I be allowed to build the garage. The slab has already been approved. I do have the permit for the slab. I talked to the contractor about adding cement and adding it back. He said it would be $6,000 to $7,000 to add another 10 feet, he said, would do. But then he didn't know about the, the wall that I'd have to put up to prevent the water from running through there. In fact, it might even steer the water more into that section. So I'm just asking that the garage be permitted as it is. It is setback far enough from the road. I can park my large Ram truck, which is a maxi cab truck, up against the slab, and I'm not hanging out in the road. So I feel I'm far enough back for roadwork that may be coming, there, to rectify some of the issues with me, that I'm thinking, maybe I don't have to landscape the front of my property, because it's very difficult to grow grass here, I've found. I also did it to protect my neighbor's property, James, who lives to the south of my property. I also purchased a lot next door, along with the house. It was a snake-infested mess in there.
You've cleared all that out also?
All done.
Looks good.
I filled it, I leveled it, I made sure that the runoff was between our property lines, which is essentially where I wish to eventually run the water down that side. Now, if I have to, if I'm allowed to put in a small ditch or something along the road, if that's feasible, fine, if that's what's necessary, or if the road's going to take care of that, that's fine. But essentially, I'd like to just move that watershed another 30 or 40 or 50 feet down the road so that it flows between my two pieces of property, thereby eliminating James' house from being flooded and my house from being flooded, and essentially work well, it doesn't interfere with any road construction that's coming. And all these are the things that I took into consideration when I planned the project. So I think I've done everything I can to meet the needs of the project. As a new resident here, I love the community. I mean, the people are wonderful. But, you know, I, I would like to, just a suggestion, to see that someone is put in charge of, of these things, inspections, to go out and look at these projects, not to find all fault, but to help a resident understand what needs to be done and possibly a better way to do it, to consider watershed.
You keep talking, we're gonna, we're gonna volunteer you.
How much does it pay?
Be one of the extra taxes.
These, these are the things, these are the things that I think are very important for a growing community. And again, it's done for the safety of the community, for the safety of the residents and the housing. These are the things that are necessary. So that's what, that's what I'm asking for, is for the variance to be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions at all?
Not at this point. I'd like to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, CD, would you like to explain what the, what the situation is?
Okay, Mr. Stoneman came to the office, and we discussed what was transpiring there. When he submitted his application for a cement slab, we didn't look at it as having a structure on that, whether it be for a driveway or something else. So when he came and presented his application for a garage, a structure, that's when the flag flew, that, okay, this is probably not going to be in compliance based on the drawings that were submitted. So I went with Mr. Stoneman over to, over to his home, and I'm not sure about the 50 foot, but I do know that our discussion was that it was 25 feet from the property line. There was one stake that was there while I was there, and it appeared to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, under where the utility lines, overhead utility lines are, that would indicate something close to where a property line would be. But I'm not a surveyor, don't have those skill sets, not going to. So now, in discussions with Mr. Stoneman, his argument that he had not been informed of the requirement when he obtained the permit on the cement slab, other than that it was from the road, I don't know. I don't recall any conversation along that line. We pretty much have made it known that we have a five-foot setback from the side property lines and 25 feet from the front property line. Now, there's no minimum size for a backyard, so that's not discussed. When I reviewed the cement slab permit, there's no indication of a future plan to construct a structure on the cement slab. And so we have come to this point now of, okay, did the city misinform Mr. Stoneman? Or what happened?
So my understanding is the problem here, and it does just, the, the original permit, July 27th, was for a cement slab. Nowhere does it say that there was, are going to be a garage built on it.
Correct.
So it was just for a cement slab?
Correct.
And then the application was made a month later, almost, August 24th, for a garage. And that was where the confusion came in. If it had been clearly stated, I think in the beginning, that this was a slab to, you know, to build a garage on, probably wouldn't have, we probably wouldn't have had the confusion going on. You understand what I'm saying? Are there any comments or questions from council?
So the setback from the street edge is how far, to the edge of the slab?
That would be, I believe, what Mr. Stoneman had said was 26 feet.
26, and, and that's... 26, and that's from?
The edge of the street.
The edge of the street.
Right.
Okay, and then there's eight feet easement before you get to the property line?
That is inclusive of the utility easement there.
Right. Is that part of the property or is that part of the city?
That is where the city's ditch line would be.
Yeah. So in reality, it's how far from property line to the front of the slab?
Yeah, okay. When, when Mr. Marshall in the Public Works Department goes out to measure the city's right-of-way, we start at the center of the street and it's...
25 feet.
Right. And at that point, that's where we consider the property line to begin.
So we're missing, in this case here, eight or nine feet, something like that, from the property line. It would be 26 feet from the edge of the street to the property line. But we're losing eight feet or so from that. So that's why it says like 15 feet. What kind of problem does that cause for us? Other than the fact that it's 10 feet closer to the street than it should be?
I really can't say. It's not going to be encroaching on the utility companies right-of-way for working on their, their utility lines. For the city, it would be a matter of they're right alongside the road edge for us doing ditch work and whatever.
Has anybody gone to look at the location?
I haven't looked at that one, but I know in Charmance South, we have a couple that are...
I went by and I looked at it, and I don't see where it would pose any issue whatsoever.
Thank you, CD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir. When you have a setback, a setback refers to anything you're building within that setback, whether it's a structure, a cement slab, porch, whatever you're building. So essentially, the slab would be out of, would be out of compliance. Regardless of whether I'm going to build anything out of it or not, wouldn't that be correct, Tim?
It could be what would be considered a driveway.
But obviously, a 25 by 25-foot slab is not a driveway. And I don't ever remember seeing anything other than garage slab. Being a contractor for as long as I am, it is what it is. It's a garage slab.
Well, just one question then. You didn't mention garage when you got the first application. You just said slab.
Well, I said every time I did it, I just never wrote it on the plan. But I always referred to it as a garage slab, because that's what it was.
But we didn't know that.
I understand completely.
At least it wasn't documented that way.
It wasn't just, it wasn't documented that way. And I wasn't aware, I mean, if I knew that I had to be precise and get essentially technical drawings of what I was going to do, I would have done that.
We're going to have to break your pencil.
Yeah, I just, it never, it never occurred to me. I mean, when I put in the drawing to have the trees cut, I literally threw a couple circles on it and said, that's where they are.
How far from where the garage is are going to be, with the slab now, from your property line?
Right now...
Sideways. Side property.
Six feet. Six feet.
Okay.
I always went one foot farther to maintain that distance. So again, my intention was what I, what I felt I was told. Otherwise, I would have been happy to do what I had to do, get it back. So, but I, I don't need a 25 by 25-foot patio. I just don't.
No, I guess not.
Yeah. Excuse me, I got one question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Did all your applications, whether it be for the slab or the garage, were they done by coming in the office or did you do any of them online?
No, I did everything just by coming in the office.
Okay. And did anyone at any time tell you to refer to our ordinances?
Well, when I, when I asked to do the trees, and they said, well, you can get the permit application from the online. But I already had a copy of the code fees and things like that. So I just did sketches myself of what was to be done. I was not told that there are ordinances that are online, there are, you know, I don't even know where they are, how to find them. I mean, I'm a computer engineer, so I...
Well, on our city website, I guess is what I'm saying, so...
And I would have loved to have known. I would have loved to have known that.
Yeah. Well, and I'm not saying, I'm not defending anybody. I'm just trying to get something out of the, you know, something out in the standpoint. People got to understand that we do have ordinances in place.
I find that, I know that now, yes.
Right. And, you know, so whether it be, and I'm not saying they did or didn't when you came in, they should have had. But when you do go online, it did say on the first page to refer to our ordinances before you do any...
I was not aware of that.
Okay, no problem. I mean, we all learn, you know, and...
In fact, the first, the first time I went on the website...
There's an online permit application right here.
Yeah.
The first time I went on the, on the website...
But, but the page before that, Kathy, has this.
The page before what?
Well, I mean, when you go online, is what I'm saying.
Right.
Report for a permit. Actual permit application.
And it included states.
Okay.
Check city ordinances, restrictions.
Gotcha.
So, you know, we all, we all live and learn, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
And like I say...
Well, I put another one.
Yeah. And I'm not saying it's going to have any bearing on this. It may, it may not, I don't know, you know.
Well, the first time I went on the website was back in May, back in May. And the website was very incomplete. I went there and I tried to see members and who to email and...
Members?
Well, you know...
Council members.
Yeah, council members, things like that.
It's been on there.
Yeah, well, I looked at it and it was very difficult to navigate. Maybe I should have studied it harder, went over it. But at the time, I didn't know I was buying property here. So that was the last, that was the only, in fact, that was the only time I ever looked at the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, we are not going to be making a decision tonight.
No, we're not going to make a decision tonight.
That will be, that will happen at our council meeting.
Do we have anything from the public?
There is no public.
No, well, I know the...
Were there any comments sent in, CD?
I have nothing to share.
Okay.
I'm talking about the 200, the letters were sent out. Did we get any response?
There were no responses.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
The only response I got was James coming over and banging me on the streets of the valley.
Thank you, sir. All right. I think that's it as far as the questions. And thank you for coming and explaining everything that happened. We also, before we adjourn, there's another variance application that has come in. And this is, we're on to something else, you know, but we need to set a date for another variance hearing.
I guess it depends on the newspaper, doesn't it?
I don't have anything on a new variance.
It would be what, 10 days after?
It's right there with the, with the post-it note on it, skip. Look at, over here on Will's desk, or Will's. I don't, everybody had one.
I thought it was the same one. No, okay. Got it.
So are we looking at next council meeting in October, prior to the October meeting?
No, October 1st is a Friday. The 30th of September is a Thursday.
The 11th of October, that's, that's when, that was like... Thursday is, the 11th is, but city council meeting is on the 18th.
Of October?
No, I'm sorry.
It's the 21st.
I skipped a whole month.
It is the 21st.
It is 21st.
It is 21st, yeah.
So what do you think? See, if we don't do it until, oh, okay, I see what you're saying. We could do it the 21st before the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what we're thinking, prior to?
At the council meeting for that one?
Or do it the week before so that...
So we can do both?
So do the hearing on 14th?
So the 14th or do you want to do it the 7th? Or is that too soon? Okay. Okay. We're on another public hearing, variance public hearing for the 14th of October.
6:00 PM?
Yes. Standard meeting time.
6:00 PM?
Yeah. Okay. I tell you, if I don't put things right immediately in my phone, we forget. Anyway, okay, now do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Hi, Marie and Leon.
Okay.
Good.
Are we going to do this on the 29th or it's going to be on the October meeting?